Good afternoon. The Town and Southern Shores Special Meeting, Council Planning Session for September the 17th, 2019 is now in order. The purpose of this special meeting is to consider and discuss the coastal engineers' beach survey results and other items submitted by council relative to long-range planning. I'd ask you to please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to this wide right of the United States of America, to its republic, which sustains, my nation under God, indivisible, and infinite, eternal and everlasting.
I'd ask you, again tonight, to keep the folks in Okeechobee and Hatteras Island on your mind as far as a moment of silence. They're still going through a tremendous amount of turmoil and because of the losses they've suffered, they're really having a difficult time. So just keep them in our prayers if you don't mind. Thank you. Council, I'd ask that we make a minor amendment to the agenda. Items four and five on the agenda need to be reversed to put general public comment ahead of council comments. Can I have a motion to make that happen?
I'll say no.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Chris. All in favor? Aye, thank you. We now have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Chris.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? We have an agenda. Thank you. This time I'd open general public comment. Notice that no one signed their public comment. We all have a second opportunity for public comment later on in the meeting. Just a reminder, this is not a public forum as such. The public will be welcome to speak during either one or both of the two public comment periods. I would expect council to have questions from Mr. Wilson, and we will take as much time as necessary to have those questions addressed for his benefit and for our benefit and for your benefit. For those of you in the audience who may have questions for Mr. Wilson, he has agreed to meet with you and the rest of you after his presentation to us. This time I call on Ken Wilson. Good evening, Ken.
Hello, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
It's good to be back up here. I was actually up here last week checking out some of the storm damage, storm effects of the beach projects in Duck and southern part of Southern Shores, Killdoble Hills and Kitty Hawk, and didn't get back until Friday. And so last night, we were sitting around dinner table, and my wife was telling the kids I'm going back up to the Outer Banks for some meetings, and my daughter, she's like, "Well, why didn't you just stay up there over the weekend?" And my wife was like, "Yeah, yeah, why didn't you just stay up there over the weekend?" But anyways, it's always good to be back up here. So got a little bit of an outline of what I want to talk about tonight, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that council has. But rather than just diving into results, we'll get a little bit of inertia here, talk a little bit about the background, how we got to this point. And then the real update that we had was that we conducted some beach profile surveys in May of 2019, May of this past year. And so we've basically gone through some of the recommendations that we had made, used that latest and greatest information, the latest and greatest surveys, and updated our recommendations. So I'll talk a little bit about the volume changes that we noticed, basically looking at the surveys that were done in 2017, December 2017, and then the most recent surveys that were done in May 2019. So that's item two. Item three, we'll talk about the updates to the recommendations as far as do we need more volume, less volume, how the costs change, and then we'll talk a little bit about schedules and finally some recommendations, okay? So a little bit of background. As most of you know, we did that first survey of the beaches back in December of 2017. We took that information, we used some historical information of profiles that the Corps of Engineers had done, some data we had collected on the northern part of the town associated with projects that were going on in Duck. We looked at how the shoreline and how the shoreline is changing and how volumes have changed over time. We did some vulnerability analysis through the last exercise we went through, and we developed what we called a beach management plan. There were a series of recommendations, some potential options of beach fill projects that the town may consider. And one of the things that we wanted to focus on is before we make recommendations, we want to understand what the goals of the town are. And so we had gone back with previous town manager, Peter Rasko, and talked a little bit about the goals and really trying to codify what it was that the town was trying to accomplish. And those first three sub-bullets were really what we had come up with. The goal of any of these beach management plans or beach projects would be to provide a reasonable level of storm damage reduction to public and private development, to mitigate long-term erosion that could threaten public and private development, recreational opportunities, and biological resources, and third, maintain a healthy beach that supports valuable shorebird and sea turtle nesting habitat. So all three of those are really our goals as we're trying to figure out, you know, what sort of a design to recommend to the town. That next bullet says beach management plan recommendations were based on the December 2017 survey data, as I mentioned in my opening remarks. So today, we'll talk about the updated beach profile surveys and basing those updates on the latest surveys that were done in May of 2019. And then the final bullet basically says that the beach management plan, any of these recommendations, are really aimed to coordinate the efforts of Southern Shores with neighboring communities in Dare County to try to achieve cost savings coming off of the 2017 project where Killdoble Hills, Kitty Hawk, the town of Duck, and kind of at the last minute, the town of Southern Shores worked together to achieve a significant amount of cost savings. So we want to kind of follow that model and if possible, try to coordinate these efforts together with other towns to achieve those cost savings. So that's the background that I've got. One more thing before we jump into updates. Throughout the course of this report that was submitted about a week and a half ago, this report that I'll be talking about today, we really kind of break this down into three different parts of the town. And so as I go through and talk about volume changes, as we talk about these options, I want you to kind of think about the town as three different segments. The middle segment, which basically runs from about Third Avenue south to just south of Chickahawck, it's about 400 feet to south of where Chickahawck comes out onto the main beach road, that section we called the main placement area. We may come up with a better name for that as we move on, but for the initial report, that was basically the area that fell below what our design criteria was, that we felt additional sand should be placed in that main placement area. And then we had a section from basically just south of Chickahawck down to the southern boundary of Southern Shores that we called the transition area. So part of that area was included in that 2017 project. The expectation was that additional sand would be placed in that same area that was nourished in 2017, which would kind of leave a small gap between where our recommended project would end, near Chickahawck again, and where that southern section that was re-nourished in 2017 would have sand placement. And from a design standpoint, from a wave refraction standpoint, there were some issues, some concerns we had about leaving a small gap there. So we called that area the transition area, and we said basically, no matter what happens, we would recommend putting some sand in that 5,000-foot section. And then the final segment that leaves us at the northern portion, so now we're talking about basically Third Avenue moving north to the town boundary with the town of Duck, another roughly 4,000, 4,500 to 5,000 feet of beach. And during the initial assessment, we recommend that the beach, that the dune and the beach up there were wide enough, had enough volume in it, that it did not need additional sand to be placed up there at that time. And so those are the three areas, that's kind of how the report reads, that's kind of how my presentation will go tonight. We'll talk about that, we'll reference those three areas, okay? All right, so, volume change update. What have we learned? So when we compare, again, we talked about those three sections, the northern portion, the main fill area, and the transition area, what we found, let's see. Okay, so town-wide, this is just talking about what measurements we made. Town-wide, we were able to compare that December 2017 survey to the May 2019 survey. So we can look at changes along the entire stretch of beach, the entire stretch of the town, over that roughly 18-month period. From about Third Avenue south to the southern boundary, there's also an old Corps of Engineers' beach profile survey that was done back in October 2006. So for that southern roughly 15,000 feet of beach, we can compare long-term what happened between October 2006 and May 2019 to give us sort of a longer-range trend of what was going on in that area. And then in the northern section of town, I mentioned that back in, when we first started working with the town of Duck back in 2013, we had conducted a series of profiles at the northern end of Southern Shores. That covers about the northern 2,000 most feet of Southern Shores, basically from Ninth Avenue north. And so we can compare that September 2013 survey to our May 2019 survey and get a little bit of a longer-range reading of what's going on in that area. But obviously, that section between Third Avenue and Ninth Avenue, the only surveys we have are that December 2017 and May 2019 surveys, okay? All right, so results. So in the northern portion, we'll start up north. In the northern portion, our surveys show that that area on average, basically we're talking about, I believe, five profiles. If you average the volume change along those five profiles, we found that that area gained sand between December 2017 and May 2019 at a rate of about 5.5 cubic yards per linear foot per year. That's a lot to digest. Basically, we measure these density rates as if you have a foot of beachfront, say your property is 100 feet wide, 100 feet long, we're talking about one foot of that property lost 5.5 or gained 5.5 cubic yards of sand. So a truck, a dump truck's about 12 cubic yards of sand, so maybe a half of a dump truck load over the course of one foot of beach over the course of a year, all right? So that's how we come up with that rate. Between September 2013, I mentioned in that northern 2,000 feet of the north end of town, we have that 2013 data. So little longer range from 2013 to 2019, we measured over that 5.7-year period, that volume change rate was about 1.3 cubic yards per linear foot per year, okay? So even looking at the, that's from Ninth Street, Ninth Avenue, I'm sorry, to the northern boundary, we still, over the course of that 5.7-year, we've got a slight increase in volume. I'd say, you know, that's closer to basically no change, stable. All right, so let's go to that middle section, that main fill area that I showed you, that basically runs from Third Avenue down to roughly Chickahawck. In that section, the December 2017 to May 2019 volume change analysis showed that that area also gained some sand on the average of about 4.6 cubic yards per linear foot per year. So about the same rate as that northern area gained sand, slightly less, all right? And then that transition area, the southern 5,000 feet of the beach, that's where we saw the most volume losses. That transition area lost sand between December 2017 and May 2019. It averaged about 18.9 cubic yards of linear foot, so now we're talking about over a dump truck per foot of beach is what was lost in that southern 5,000-foot section, okay? Those last two bullets talk a little bit about the longer-range trends. So we're talking about between 2017 and 2019, we gained some sand in the main fill area, we lost sand in that transition area on the south end. But between, let's see, in the area south of Third Avenue had a long-term average, now we're talking about 2006 to 2019, that had a long-term average volume change rate of a positive 2.5 cubic yards per linear foot per year. So we're averaging both the main fill area and the transition area, about 15,000 feet of beach. If you average all those profiles together, there's a slight gain, net gain, per year measured in that area. Also, consider the fact that that's the area where the beach nourishment project was placed, so we've artificially placed a little bit of sand in that area as well. And finally, that last bullet, the area south of Third Avenue had a short-term average volume change rate of three cubic yards a linear foot per year. Again, we're talking about that same area, but I'm going to come back to why that's important, that negative three cubic yards per linear foot per year along the area from Third Avenue south to the Kitty Hawk boundary, okay? All right, so let's talk a little bit about the recommended beach fill options. When we first came up with those recommended beach fill options, we looked at basically two principles, okay? Where do we need to place that sand? Where along the town does the beach need additional volume to achieve those three goals we showed on the background slide? And two, how much volume do we need to place in that area where we need volume? And in order to answer those two questions, we looked at historic volume changes to the degree we had historic data. We looked at a vulnerability analysis that was done last year using a numerical model called S-Beach, which basically simulates storm impacts on a particular beach profile. And we also looked at the overall volume that's present in what we call the volume envelope, all right? So I've got this graphic here that I want to talk for just a minute about what that volume envelope means, all right? So this is basically a cross-section of the beach. When we go out and run our surveys, this is a profile that was surveyed just around the Pelican's Watch area. This is about 1,000 feet north of the town boundary, all right? So we start on the backside of the dune, so the houses would be over here somewhere on the backside of the dune. We start on the backside of the dune, we survey up over top the top of the dune. In this case, the crest of the dune here is at an elevation at almost probably 24 feet, reference to NAVD-88. We surveyed down the front of the dune, we surveyed the dry sand beach, the slope down to the waterline, we survey out into the water as deep as we can swim with a Rad RTK survey system. And then we have a hydrographic survey vessel that actually surveys the offshore portion of the profile. So we're not surveying just the dry sand beach that you can see through the, you know, when you walk out on the beach. We're surveying all the way down, this survey would have gone all the way out about 3,000 feet offshore to about 30 feet of water, okay? So what we're talking about when we talk about this volume envelope is we have determined a point on the backside of the dune at every profile, that backside point, I believe it's referenced to the minus 20-foot contour. So wherever this profile crosses this dotted line, this minus 20-foot contour, we measure all the sand that's above the minus 24-foot contour, which is this line here. We measure all the volume in this wedge of sand. The significance of that minus 24-foot contour is something that we call the depth of closure. It's basically the distance offshore to where it's very rare for sand to migrate back and forth beyond that depth of closure. It's a theoretical, it's a theoretical depth that's computed based on wave events throughout the area, but in general, it's thought of as everything inside of that depth of closure is the active profile, and sand is constantly moving inshore, offshore, up onto the beach, off the beach. We see that during storms. So when we measure the volume of sand, we want to measure all the way out to that minus 24 feet. Something else I'll just say is that, you know, we're aware of some of the comments of folks up on the northern part of the town about their concerns with some scarping of the dunes and things like that. So it's possible that if we were to measure some of those beach profiles up there and only calculate the volume change above, say, the zero contour, we may see rates that tell us that they've actually lost sand up in that northern part of the town. But when we look at the profile all the way out to that minus 24-foot contour, we're seeing measurements that say they've actually gained on the whole profile out to minus 24, they've actually gained some sand into the system. So that's important to keep in mind. All right, so the original, the original initial recommendations that came out of that beach plan, we had three options. Option one and option two were based on the idea that in order to provide a certain level of protection, we wanted to maintain 846 cubic yards per linear foot of fill inside of that yellow wedge that I just showed you on that previous slide. Option three was based on maintaining an even higher fill density. I think it was 857 maybe cubic yards per linear foot in that yellow wedge. The way that we came up with those numbers was based on some of that vulnerability analysis. We used two different storms. We're basically, we're basically using the same construct of a storm that would impact the area, that would be comparable to what Hurricane Isabel did back in 2003. The difference between those two storms is that option one and two are based off of water levels, sea level, based on today's condition, and that option three is based on projecting what sea level would be like 30 years from now. So that's the difference between, basically, the design volume for option one and two versus option three. The reason we have two based off of that first, that first 846 cubic yards is that we looked at those in two different ways. We said, okay, in the main fill area, how much sand do we need to achieve that 846 cubic yards a linear foot? And we came up with, we have to add 45 cubic yards per linear foot to hit that average of 846 in the 10,000-foot main fill section, okay? But we also talked about, we always want to put some sand in that transition area, and we just, we've decided that 30 cubic yards a linear foot would be sort of a minimal constructable fill density in that transition area. So we've got 45 cubic yards of linear foot for 10,000 feet, 30 cubic yards of linear foot for basically 5,000 feet, and then some additional fill on top of that. That's how we came up with option one. Option two basically said, well, instead of looking at these as two separate segments, a main fill and a transition area, what if we average all those profiles together and figure out how much we need to get up to 846? And that only required, I think, 29 cubic yards of linear foot, and we bumped that up to 30 cubic yards of linear foot, which is why option two is a little bit less. And then option three is done the same way as option one, take the main fill area, how much volume do we need to hit that number of 850, I think it was 858? And that required 57 cubic yards of linear foot as opposed to 45, still putting 30 cubic yards of linear foot in the transition area, okay? So this is what was in the original report, all right? Now we'll compare and contrast that. Again, just want to show you this, main placement area and then transition area. All right, so the updated project volume would be option one, we're still looking to design to that same 846 cubic yards a linear foot. Think of that as our par. That's what we want to maintain on any of these beach profiles. So we're looking to design to that 846 cubic yards a linear foot, and we're also looking at adding three cubic yards of linear foot per year of an erosion rate, okay? I mentioned that on a couple of slides back. I said that when we look at, when we average the southern 15,000 feet of beach, the main fill area and the transition area, we see a loss rate between 2017 and 2019 of about negative three cubic yards a linear foot. So when we did this survey, or when we did the study back in 2017, all of the data that we had, that we had looked at showed some sort of a positive trend over whatever range we had. This is the first time we have two surveys back-to-back that actually shows a trend of erosion. So now we have this minus three cubic yards a linear foot per year, and we're using that as our erosion rate to figure out what our advanced fill will be, okay? I'll talk about advanced fill in just a second. We've got a graphic that'll go over that. So option one, designed to 846, option two, designed to 858, and those volumes over on the side are what we, what the new volumes would look like as opposed to what was in the original report. One thing, again, these options are not, because we've seen addition, because we've seen, you know, basically that we're already at that 846 or that 858 volume density up in the northern portion of town, and our data shows that we've actually gained some sand between 2017 and 2019, the current option one and option three don't include placement of sand in that northern section of the beach. All right, so I just talked about that negative erosion rate, all right? We've shown this schematic a couple times in the past, but it helps illustrate what the difference is between the design volume and what the difference is between the advanced fill or the erosion volume, okay? So we go out there, we've done our study, we determined that in order to protect that house during a certain condition, a certain storm scenario, we need this much sand, okay? So think of this as our, if we add that much sand, we now have our magical 846 cubic yards of linear foot inside that yellow volume envelope, all right? So that's our design beach, but we want to maintain that design beach, not just on the day that the dredge leaves Southern Shores. We want that design volume to maintain, to be maintained all the way through a five-year maintenance period so that when the dredge comes back five years from now, six years from now, wherever it is, we still have that amount of sand on the beach. So we need to add extra sand that we know will erode away over the course of that five-year period, all right? So when we construct the beach, we pile all of the sand up, we make the sand, the beach artificially wider than the design calls for, because this amount, this volume of sand is going to migrate offshore and re-nourish the outer portion of the profile over the course of, say, six months to 18 months if you get a good storm right after the project. So this is how Nag's Head was done. I suspect that Hurricane Dorian probably moved that sand offshore in the course of a couple of weeks. So their project is equilibrating now, but what we're left with is we have our design beach, let's see, we have our design beach that I just talked about, the amount of sand we have to place to reach that 846 cubic yards. We also have this advanced fill, and that's the sand we expect to erode away over whatever our nourishment interval is. So we're designing this project for a five-year nourishment interval. Our data says we're losing about three cubic yards of linear foot. As a geologist, even I can do that math, 5 times 3 is 15 cubic yards of linear foot. We're going to add 15 cubic yards of linear foot along the entire stretch of beach, and that's going to bump up the volume of sand we need to build this project, all right? So let's talk about costs. This is Table 5 of the updated draft report that's been submitted to the towns on page 22 of the report. What we're looking at is the two options. Option one, the placement of 828,400 cubic yards of sand, we're looking at a total cost of just over $14 million. Option three, which would be building to that higher fill density of, I believe it's 858 cubic yards of linear foot, that would require a little bit more sand, just over a million cubic yards of sand. The cost of that project comes in at around $16.7 million, okay? Again, this is covering the southern 15,000 feet of beach, basically from Third Avenue south to the Kitty Hawk town line. All right, the schedule at this point in time, the schedule has The schedule at this point in time, the schedule has not changed based on this update. This is the same schedule that we presented back in the early part of this year when we provided the original beach management plan. Basically, this schedule says, in order to hit a construction date of May 2022, we want to start initiating discussions with the regulatory agencies and starting, you know, the design and the permitting process sometime around February of 2020. So that's contracts in place, that's, you know, that's ready to move forward in February of 2020. All right. And so in this updated report that we provided to the town, there are also a series of recommendations. At this point in time, we've used the May 2019 data to update, using the same objective criteria that we came up in the first place. Determine whether to pursue a project, which option to pursue. Continue coordination with the county and neighboring communities. There was a meeting back in February of this year that was hosted by the county, the county manager and the chairman of the county commissioners. The mayors and the managers of all the towns were invited, were attending that meeting. There's already been some discussion about what the county believes they can support, they can provide to other beach towns that want to do something beyond the projects that have already been constructed. So we're talking about Nag's Head, Buxton, the Killable Hills, Kitty Hawk project, the Duck project, and the southern part of what we did in southern shores back in 2017. Their priority is maintain those projects they've already spent money on. But they've also projected that there's a certain amount of money they can use to support a potential additional project, wherever that may be, whether it's southern shores, you know, down in Rodanthe, a different part of the town of Duck, whatever it is. So continue coordination, because I believe that coordination has already started. Initiate financial planning. And we've talked to a financial planning consultant that deals with municipalities. If this is the direction that you're going to go down, certainly that initiation of financial planning sooner than later is recommended. Initiating the permitting and the design of the beach fill, again, you'd want to start that around February 2020. This assumes that the town decides to pursue a project. And finally, continued monitoring of the beach profiles. I believe this past budget cycle, the town did put money in the budget to be able to conduct another survey in 2020, so the spring of 2020. If the town elects to do that survey again, you would be in the stages of starting the design of a project at that point in time. You could use that survey to update the same analysis that we've just done over the last couple of months. You could look at how those changes are occurring and modify the plan as needed. So those are our five recommendations, along with the options that were presented in the report. And I'm happy to open it to questions at this point in time. I've got a couple other slides that if questions come up, may help answer some questions. But I think this is a good spot to stop. I'm going to grab a drink of water real quick.
Sure, Ken. I'll kick it off, going back to our conversation we had earlier last week about the north end of our beach.
Sure.
It's come to my attention from a number of the residents there, and I've looked at it too, and I see some loss of beach width. And it's interesting that that sand is still there, and I think it probably is because some of the neighbors up there told me that it's interesting how people can walk out further once they get to the water, they keep going out, and they're 30 or 40 feet off the beach, and they're still waist, no more than waist-deep or even knee-deep.
Right.
So the sand is there. My question for Ken was, how do we get that sand back on the beach where it came from? And his response to me was, if I'm not mistaken, you correctly, we will be pumping sand from somewhere else into the beach itself.
Right. I mean, the idea of manipulating the profile, the profile, the way that the beach is laying out there right now, and I will show you this profile. So this is a profile, we call this Station 170 plus 56. This is right at Eighth Avenue. I believe this is the access at the end of Eighth Avenue. The profile probably falls just a little bit to the, looks like just a little bit to the north. But these two lines here are basically the profiles that were actually surveyed. The green one would be the older profile that was surveyed in 2017. The black one would be the profile that was surveyed in 2019. And I went through and sort of digitized to try to show the trade-off in this profile as you go from, you know, the survey in 2017 and 2019. So there's actually a portion of the upper part of the profile that's probably above even where the sand fencing is. It looks like it's gained a little bit of sand in the upper part of the profile. But as you get down here, I'd say 10 feet is probably at what you would call the toe of the dune up in this part of the project area for the town. So this is, this red area here is volume loss that's occurred between these two survey times, and it would look like a loss of sand in the dry sand beach, basically, you know, where you'd put your towels, where you'd be walking down to the water. That would show a loss of sand. And even out here on the bar, you're seeing a loss of sand. There would have been a little bit of a gain of sand here, again, some loss. This is, I mean, this is out deeper than 10 feet of water we're talking about here. And then as you get offshore, and even further off of this graphic either, that's where we, you know, when we measured these volume changes, we're actually seeing positive volume. If we were to measure this profile, I mentioned this earlier, if I was to measure this profile of what was the volume change at this minus 10-foot contour, my guess is that it would show us that we've lost sand above the minus 10-foot contour. But again, that's why we want to survey all the way out to that depth of closure. So what I was getting at was, you know, trying to get the sand that's in the offshore, how do we get it up onshore? Well, the shape of that profile is a response to the wave energy that's hitting the coast on a regular basis and the grain size of the sand that's on the beach. So if we change the grain size of the beach, if we put, you know, riprap out there, you know, big rock rubble, it would change the slope of that profile. The waves would no longer be able to manipulate the profile the way that it can do with sand. It would take, you know, one slope, and it wouldn't change unless we had a catastrophic event. We could put very fine sand out there, and it may actually flatten the slope of the beach where you have a flatter, a lower, flatter beach as you move offshore. One of the things I've noticed, I was up at Seventh Avenue last week, I was up at Eighth Avenue this afternoon, but the grain size, if you walk up and down the beach and just look down at the beach, don't even get down on your knees, just look down at the beach, you can noticeably see how coarse that sand is up there. I mean, it almost looks like, you know, pea gravel at some points in time. And that, I mean, that sand is going to hold a little bit of a steeper slope than areas where you've got finer-grained sand. But again, going back to the idea of manipulating the profile, you could, you know, people do beach bulldozing at times, you could pull sand up and try to push it into the dune, but that shape of that profile is a certain way because the wave energy and the sand that makes up that beach wants it to be that way. So the only way of, you know, improving that situation would be, you know, adding sand to the system, you know, making some sort of a change in that regard.
As a follow-up to that, I'm wondering if it wouldn't pay to go back to the goals of the beach management plan? And the goals of the beach management plan seem to be very heavy on protecting the dunes and adjacent improvements, both public and private. But can we add a goal of maintaining some kind of minimum usable beach? And I say usable beach for humans.
That's right.
I'm not trying to be funny, but...
Right, sure.
Go beyond the wildlife.
Right. I mean, it's your project, so, I mean, we can put anything, I mean, we look towards the town for those goals, and we, once we have those goals and we've sort of nailed those goals down, then we use, you know, that this is the end result that the town is desiring. We use that information and the data that we collect to try to come up with the best fit to satisfy those goals.
Well, and I don't mean to be critical of those original goals, but sometimes you get into some things and realize, maybe we need to tweak our goals a little bit to accomplish an overall goal, and that overall goal involves vacationers using our beaches. So anyway, I guess we'll need to have that discussion here at town before we try and address some kind of minimum beach area.
That's right. That's a good point. Yes, sir.
Ken, do you have a profile of Pelican Watch, the kind of before and after, similar graphic like you have here?
Yeah, not, there's one that was provided with the report. There's one of these graphics, well, it's not color-coded, but it looks like this. There's one of these for each of the profiles along the entire area.
Can I answer your question, Fred?
Is all that online?
If you'd have it.
Okay.
I guess what I'm asking you is, how successful was Pelican Watch? How much have we actually lost?
Sure. It looked like, well, I know that, you know, we averaged that southern 5,000 feet, and it kind of goes back and forth. I think the profile right at the southern boundary was one that had a little higher loss, the one at, the one at just 1,000 feet north of there might have had a little less of a loss, or maybe even a little bit of a gain. But I'd have to look at the table. There's actually a table in the report, I don't know if any of you guys have the report in front of you, but there's a table that shows the volume change for every single profile, and that would kind of give you a read of what it was at minus 10, what it was at minus, 0 and minus 10 are really the profiles that fall at Pelican Watch.
Well, let me ask you this, wasn't a certain amount of loss expected?
Yes.
Because as I recall, you explained it to us before, initially, we would lose some, and you would form a shelf below the waterline, and that theoretically would, I guess, stop a lot of that wave action and subsequent erosion.
Correct. It would move off into the near shore.
Okay. Wouldn't that loss also enter into the averages of the whole area, the main fill area, and make the loss greater than probably it really is in the main fill?
That minus three cubic yards?
Yeah.
Yeah. It may, but, I mean, I guess in theory, the movement of that sand, like I showed in that graphic, the movement of that sand from up on the beach to offshore, it doesn't move off beyond that minus 24-foot contour. So when we run that survey and we measure those volume changes down to minus 24, even though it's not up on the beach anymore, it should still be in the system. And so we're looking at where that sand has migrated, not necessarily offshore, it's not going offshore, it's going north or it's going south away from that particular profile. And we're looking at changes that have occurred, that that sand is no longer in that, along that profile, in that section of beach. So to answer your question, I don't think, I don't think because the beach project was there, it's artificially inflating those numbers, especially because the beach project really is only like two of the profiles that fall in there, maybe it's three, it's zero, it's minus 10, and minus 20. But we've got 15 profiles in that section where we came up with that minus three cubic yards of linear foot. So there are a couple of those profiles down there at the southern end that had, you know, some higher numbers that were driving those averages.
One thing that I noticed the day after Dorian, I was out checking clients' properties, and there was a lot of sand that was blown up toward the dune. In fact, the second set of sand fencing that we put out there was buried minus two or three inches. And it was quite remarkable that it looked like a lot of sand was trapped up there by that sand fencing and everything, which leads me to ask the question, if sand fencing was put up along the entire length of southern shores, does that help with this sand profile or beach width, or, I mean?
I think what the sand fencing does is, it's putting more of the sand into that protective dune that's directly in front of the house. So, I mean, you see it blowing around on the beach on a windy day. And again, those, the grain size that I talked about, you know, that will, it will be harder to capture those coarser grain sizes, they're not going to blow as much as the fine stuff. But the dune, I mean, the sand fencing certainly will put that sand in a spot on the profile that provides you, you know, a great deal of protection up there. You know, the higher that you can get that sand, the less it's, the less it's interacting with the water when you have a high tide or when you have a storm event. So, I mean, we've all seen, you know, on a day like today, you go out there, the wind is blowing pretty good, and at high tide, that water's going to be pushed up a little higher than it would be on a calm day at high tide, just because the wind is pushing it up there. So the higher you can get that sand up on the, you know, up on the profile, the more of sort of a permanent, quasi-permanent protection that you're achieving, to try to keep it higher up on the profile.
But it sounds like it is helping to trap some sand within that profile area.
Sure, yep.
And I understand that sand fencing and dune building is different from what you're talking to us about. But at least sand fencing is something an individual property owner or community can do.
Definitely, definitely.
And I would add that that's probably our entire beachfront, that northern section from Hickory North probably has the least amount of sand fence per property. The sand fence has been maintained a little bit better a little further south. And I don't know the reason for that, whether it's just, it's been there originally and now it's gone, and maybe it got covered up by sand moving. I don't know the answer, but there's not much sand fence showing, which I would encourage the owners of the property to try to address that. I had asked, back on the same subject with the north end of our beach, I had asked Ken how to get the sand back there, and of course, his response was, we have to pump it there. And the numbers they gave us were, it would take about, to bring the beach back to where it was, we'd like to see it anyway, it was about 30 cubic yards per linear foot along that stretch of beach at 4,000 or 5,000, 4,000 yards of beach.
Yeah, I think it's about 4,700 feet, something like that.
It would take about 142,000, 141,000 cubic yards of sand, and it would cost about $2.1 million, over and above our initial estimated cost of about $14 million, roughly $14.2 million. So we're at $16.1 or $2 million. There's a total cost of the project. Should we decide to move forward with this? It's just somewhere to decide as council. I'd probably recommend we take a little time and digest this and discuss it at our next meeting in October, as far as what we want to try to do.
Counsel, go ahead.
Yes, Chris.
I had a quick question. I mean, these graphs were really helpful, understanding how the sand is moving linearly out in that one-foot contour. Some other folks have kind of hinted at it, that it doesn't just move in this one direction, it's moving across also.
Right.
I was struck by the initial numbers, and I know this is, I'm sure overly simplistic, but I'm working to something. And initially, you had mentioned that the north side of Ninth had about a, within that envelope, 5.5 increase, between Ninth and Third was 1.3, the main section had about 4.6. Adding those together, you've got a gain in those sections of about 11.4. That southern section, with what we've studied, is a loss of about 18. So a layman looking at this says, okay, we've got about a 7.5 difference, we've got a two-year difference between studies, and I'm hearing what you're saying, that about three cubic yards goes away every year. So we're pretty close to being about level in, across those all beaches, all the beaches. Am I correct in understanding, as a layman, that the sand, as a long-term, is kind of migrating north? Is that a fair assessment, or is...
It's sort of in debate. We did a sediment transport analysis when we first got into Duck, and we found that, based on the, whatever the time period that we were looking at, that on, that net sediment was moving north within Duck. It's very possible that sand is moving to the north. I mean, what you get is basically, on any given day, depending on what the wind is doing, if it's blowing out of the north, the sand is traveling to the south. If it's blowing out of the south, it's traveling to the north. And it's just a matter of, over the course of a year, what's your net? But yes, I mean, the sand is traveling more laterally than it is north and south. the sand is traveling more laterally than it is, um, north and south. Um, from, from, you know, just, uh, anecdotally looking at the projects and, and doing the monitoring for Kill Double Hills and Kitty Hawk, we're seeing higher loss rates at Kitty Hawk and a- almost no losses at Kill Double Hills, which might suggest maybe that sand is moving, you know, south from, from Kitty Hawk into Kill Double Hills. But there are also some very unusual contours offshore of Kitty Hawk and the northern end of Kill Double Hills that may be driving that. I mean, a- another simple way of looking at it is that, you know, the beach is sort of like this conveyor belt of sand and, um, you know, if you, if you do anything to interrupt that conveyor belt of sand, whether you slow it down in one spot or you speed up the sand movement out of another spot, uh, it doesn't take much to, to create, you know, just a smart, a, a small change in that where, where it, it looks to you as your beach is eroding or your beach is, you know, gaining sand very quickly. And so when you look at those offshore contours down around Kitty Hawk and Kill Double Hills, it may be a wave focusing, focusing thing that's, that, that's basically, you know, either speeding up or slowing down that sediment transport that's going down there. And that may be what's happening in the, the southern part of the town, that southern 5,000 feet. I mean, we saw how fast that area eroded, um, lea- in the lead-up to the 2017 project. We saw how fast sand was, was peeling out of that area. Um, and I, I mean, we've, we ran some offshore contours to try to see if there's some, some different things that are going on, at least in the southern, at least in the, the southern 5,000 feet of shoreline along southern shores. And there wasn't any, there weren't any crazy variability in the offshore contour. So, I mean, I'm not sure what's, what's causing that. But certainly the data is suggesting that in that southern area, you know, there's something going on where we're losing sand faster than, um, the other two parts of the town.
Okay. No, I'm asking as, as the mayor's talking about the more northern areas and where to prioritize if, you know, it'd be nice to be able to have a crystal ball. It sounds like the 20, the, the new 2020 survey will be able to give us some more information. They'll have three years across the whole town. Maybe that, that gives us a little bit more to say, okay, put a little more, more in the transitional or whatever the case may be.
Correct.
I have one other question for you. The, uh, profile data that you're gathering, not just in southern shores, but Duck, Kitty Hawk, et cetera, on down the line. Is there any correlation or should there, in your opinion, be any correlation between that and the camera erosion rates? Cause those were, uh, their erosion rates have tremendous, uh, regulatory impacts.
Right. No, they, um, I, I don't know if should, I, I mean, I don't know if I'm, I don't know if I should answer the should.
That's, that whole question I asked you is kind of unfair.
Right. But, um, I think for what they use it for, um, looking at a very long-term trend, it, it, you know, is, is probably an appropriate way of looking at it. I mean, they, as far as I know, they're still using, um, older aerial photographs and basically digitizing the wet/dry line on those aerial photographs and then looking at the most recent aerial photographs and digitizing the wet/dry line on those most recent, uh, aerial photographs. And in our report, we talk, we talk about shoreline change as opposed to volume change. And that's, it's basically the same thing, except when you survey it, at least you have the same contour that you can go back to and look at, okay, where was the mean high water contour or on the, I mean, if you just use the zero, the zero-foot contour. So I can say, okay, well, on May whatever, 2019, the zero contour was right here and a year and a half earlier, it was right here. And you can measure that linear distance and say, okay, well, in this, in this year and a half, that shoreline has changed, you know, six feet or 10 feet or whatever that distance is. Um, but, I mean, we see how that, that, that contour changes from, we, if we would've gone out and surveyed it right before Dorian and we surveyed it today, we could see more than six or seven feet. So you don't want to take small number or small, uh, time periods and look at those shoreline changes. It's good if you had an old record of, of how to do that, but that would, that would be something comparable that could be used to look at those erosion rates of how that shoreline is, is moving back. But it, it's a, it's a tough job and then it, it gets complicated when they get into inlet hazard areas and, uh, it's, it's, it's very difficult to put, you know, to, to have a one-size-fits-all rule across the state.
Your averages appear to me to be pretty much in sync with the camera regulations, but that's not always, you know, it seems like your data or data like yours over a 10, 15, a 20-year period would be a better way of establishing those regulatory lines. But I'm sorry, that, that's kind of beyond what we're discussing.
That's okay. Something else to keep in mind, if, if it's something of interest, you know, that trying to get a handle on those, 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 um, those rates is that, um, folks at the field research facility, they're conducting some research projects along the, the northern outer banks and I believe all of southern shores is included in it. But they're probably with a, you know, a pretty high frequency, maybe every couple of months or, you know, multiple times a year, they are, um, using a, uh, an off-road vehicle to drive up and down the beach and they've got a, a LiDAR system attached to their, their truck. And so they could measure the changes in a, a single contour or they could measure the changes in, you know, loss of the dune. But they, but it doesn't allow them to do that loss out to that minus 24 foot contour, cause they're only seeing above the waterline. Uh, but they could measure and, and I think that's their, their goal is, you know, to look at storm response in short terms and to see, um, you know, how these areas change during a storm and then how they rebound after a storm. How fast does that sand make its way back up onto the beach where we can, we can see it?
Any other questions for, for Ken, counsel? Thank you, Ken.
Sure.
Appreciate, appreciate your time this evening. Your presentation was very helpful. Thank you.
You had a great report too. Thanks.
Thanks.
As I indicated a few minutes ago, uh, Ken's offered to stick around for a few minutes if you want to ask him a, a question specific to your, to your property. Um, I would, I would just kind of reinstate or restate something I, I said almost two years ago. The Pelican Watch project, the south end of our beach, which Kitty Hawk, we piggybacked on their project, obviously, and made that possible. That was not a beach, a beach and earthment program, uh, project as such. It was a dune-saving program to save the, the, the dune loss in front of those properties. And it worked. We'd lost some of that beach, uh, as, as Red was pointing out, a little more than we have on other parts of our beach. I think the dynamics there are just different because we're tying into the Kitty Hawk, uh, project and we're also tying into a pier, which we don't have anywhere else on our beach. I think that's why it's a little more stable conditions. That's just my theory. Um, moving ahead, the, um, item B on our agenda for tonight, future capital rehabilitation and replacement of town buildings, tab two in your, in your book, counsel. We actually contracted with a company called, called Oakley Collier to come out and take a look at all of our buildings and give us some ju- suggestions and recommendations of things we should do to, um, to maintain them or possibly long-range, long-term to, uh, to replace them. And we allocated, uh, we allocated funding in our next budget to allow us to do, um, building code updates and structural updates as necessary. We put about a quarter of a million dollars in that, in the, in the budget for that for this next year. So what else do we, do we want to address this further, counsel? What else would you suggest we do with this particular subject?
I would just ask the question, have you had a chance to move that ball forward any yet? I mean, to address specific code or the structural issues?
We're in the process of putting together an RFP so we can put, put it out to bid.
There you go. Great.
For, that's just for code updates to this building, town hall, police department. Doesn't have anything to do with the other options that are presented here. But, uh, yeah, we're gonna have to get, get RFP and put that out to bid, most likely.
And that, we'll be looking at some structural issues as well. Flooring is structurally, that, that sound or walls?
Any of the, any of the code deficiencies that were identified in the report.
Okay.
Building code deficiencies.
When you get that RFP foot together, will that be advertised locally?
Um, it depends on which process we're gonna, we have to follow. I don't know what the number's gonna be and all that, but we always, I mean, if we, if we can, we're gonna try to advertise locally, obviously.
I'm always an advocate for hiring local. I'm a private businessman, so I'm, you know, I'm sensitive to that.
Yes, sir.
When do you think you're going to, uh, be able to provide that RFP?
Uh, we're in storm mode right now, so hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we can get around to that. Okay. Yes, sir.
Thanks.
I mean, I'll, I'll keep it short. I, I think they're desperately needed. I'm glad we spent the, we're putting some money at it and, and we just have to keep making it better and more conforming and make an effort at it. So I, I think you just keep going. And, um, and I, and I do like seeing these other options. Um, but as a short, as a stopgap, we've got some concerns that have to be addressed sooner rather than later. So, so keep going.
Those of you who don't have a book in front of you with those options that he's talking about, uh, we, they were, they were, they gave us a number of redevelopment options for the, for the town hall complex. Different, different, having everything under one roof, having three different buildings like we have now, but oriented differently to provide for more parking. And that, I think those, that's probably available online. Uh, it's up there as well, but it will be available online, I'm sure, I'm sure. And you can see what their, what their, the architect was proposing to us. Significant cost up to as high as, I think the top dollar was about $5 million to redo the whole, the whole project, the whole town, town, uh, site, town hall site and, and associated buildings. Any further discussion on that second item, counsel? Item B. Let's move ahead then to, uh, our, our fire chief, I believe. Capital apparatus, equipment, needs of southern shores voluntary department. Evening, Ed.
Evening, counsel. Sheila, I think I did change my monitor. Can you pull that up on the screen? I think it might be easier for me to explain. I did have a hard copy handout, but, uh, it's kind of hieroglyphics. I understand it, of course, because I build it. But, uh, I think it's gonna be easier to explain up here and to make it a little bigger here. Or maybe not. I'll hand the hard copy out also.
I just want to add something to what I just said. Basically, our fire department contract requires our fire chief to present us every year with his needs for them for the next year, if they would be different than what the current year he's in. And that's what he's doing with this form, even though it's not due until budget time, we're covering it a little bit early. And I think Ed can explain to you what the, what the monetary cost will be for this next year as opposed to what it is now. And that's, that's, and he may have some of that information he wants to provide us with. You're welcome to do that, Ed. Go ahead.
All right. So stole some of my thunder there, but that's good. Um, so most of you all know me here. We've all worked together for many years. You know, I'm pretty much an open book. I have nothing to hide. Uh, it's pretty much black and white for me. Pretty simple. Um, I thought the best way to do this, this really is a budget thing. It's not really, um, this is going beyond the scope of tonight, but I thought this was a good illustration. And the numbers are the numbers. I don't know what the inflation's gonna be. I don't know what the interest rates are gonna be next year, never mind 10 years from now. So it's kind of just a projection. It's just that, a projection. You can see I put that in red so that everyone understands. This is the best estimated guess as of today. So, uh, it's kind of, this is kind of a culmination of the policies we've set in place since, in the last six years I've been chief. It's taken me this long to get the department to this point and it's, you know, been a lot of big steps. Obviously the building, that was a big step. Um, but getting the rotation of equipment and different things that we have to replace according to ocean and NFPA. Uh, many of the items that you're gonna see here tonight, don't let these numbers scare you. Many of them are already absorbed into our budget and it was well-planned for over the last six years. Um, the projection is required by the new contract. It's something that the town wanted when we negotiated the new contract before the building, that every year this will be updated as a 10-year roadmap is where we're going. And that's really all this is. A snapshot on, in my brain for you to see where I'm going over the next 10 years. That's it. If I'm even chief in 10 years, who knows? But at this point, this is where it's at. So we'll just start right, right at the top and I'll just run down here. As I said, I wouldn't pay a whole lot of attention to this in the numbers right now. I'll explain them in a minute. So the beginning number right there on the top is, is my vehicle that I drive every day and that was built three years, two years, two and a half years ago. That's a loan we're currently in. The next one is just a replacement of the deputy chief's vehicle. So every five years we're replacing a vehicle. When we get rid of them, they have about 95,000 on them. I don't know about you, but when I'm coming to your house, I want my car to start out front. So that's why we get rid of them, about 100,000. At 100,000, that motor realistically probably has 200,000 on it with all the idling time. Just like the police cars get replaced, same with us. The third item down is just replacing my command vehicle 10 years out after the other command. Just all the way out. Just keep replacing with new vehicle to keep the mileage down and make sure it's maintenance, not, not becoming a, a maintenance nightmare. The, uh, fourth one down where you see the 67, 531, that is a replacement of a rescue vehicle that the guys use to answer rescue calls. And it's kind of a, um, hot swap car. It's for the, everyone in the department to use. That one currently has about 106,000 miles on it. The only reason why we still have it is because I'm not gonna put a brand-new vehicle outside. I'm waiting till the building gets done before I build it. That way it'll be able to be inside. Right now, if anyone notices, this sits out back at Kitty Hawk Elementary, sitting out in the weather and just getting destroyed. I, I can't even take it. I get, I know about these vehicles, but, um, that money is also built into our budget and we're ready to absorb it. If you go down to the F250, that's our kind of work truck. We use the whole hose around where hose testing, equipment, different things after fires, whatever. It's just an open bed pickup truck. We also use it to respond to medical calls and that's five years out to replace. That truck will probably be 12 or 13 years old, but the mileage is lower because it is a 250 and people don't typically use it to run around town. It's more of a work truck. If you look down to truck 12 replacement, where you see the 133, 431, that number, all that is, is taking the budget plug from the two pierces that we just paid off last year, taking that budget plug, put it into the ladder truck. That's it. It's that simple. Um, it went up a little bit, but I, I'm still confident that I can absorb some of, probably most of it. Uh, and what I've done here is make sure that we're on a program to replace one piece of big apparatus every 10 years. That way it keeps us in compliance with NFPA. Our rating won't suffer and we're not getting that bill. We're, I need a ladder truck and two engines. I need four, four or five million dollars. We're just taking that, every time, just switching that plug, that budget plug, each, each different apparatus, moving all the way out. The last one there, Sheila, move that over some. Okay. If you went all the way, keep going all the way over, Sheila. If you go all the way over, you'll see, keep going. No, hold on. Should be 123. Yeah. Well, you see the 123, 480, right in the center of the screen up there. Yep. All that is, is taking that budget plug from the ladder truck, putting it on a new engine 10 years later. That's all it is. It's just replacement of vehicles all the way out. It's, it's not rocket scientists. It's very simple. So on the bottom here is equipment. Nope. Go up a little bit, Sheila. And then go back to the, uh, left. Okay. So where you see the SCBA's, that's a loan we're currently in. Those replaced air packs that were 15 years old and had lived past their life. Those are the air packs that people go on when they, so they can have clean air when they go into the, uh, structure. Uh, many of the ones that we've replaced, we're having issues failing. We obviously don't want the most important piece of apparatus we have on our back failing when we're in a smoky environment. That's a loan we're currently in and it's a 10-year loan. Again, that's already built into my budget. The thermal engine cameras, this will be a new one. Uh, as I stated last year when we were at the budget hearing, I did not ask for any more money, cause that's what I told you I would do. I'm a man of my word. This will be something that's upcoming, the 44,000. That's to replace the thermal engine cameras. When we get to that point for the budget, I'll show you the piece of equipment and show you how dilapidated it is. One of them we can't even fix. That's a piece of equipment we use on every single call and I'll show you the difference between a new one and the old one. That would be a number that actually is not gonna be able to be absorbed. So if you go down, when you look at capital improvement costs and you see those large numbers, don't let them freak you out. Those are numbers that are basically built into the budget that we've worked through the past six years to make sure we're prepared moving forward. So your, your biggest thing here you're looking at is your 44,000 for the ticks next year. That's what we're looking at, basically breakdown. And this just gives a pretty good roadmap of capital replacements. It doesn't mean that everything we buy, every single purchase we make is on here. Of course, we buy, you know, Of course, we buy, you know, if we need a stair, chair, it's three thousand dollars. If we break something, of course, it's built, you know, we have that built into the budget as operating cost. This is your big-ticket items, though. Uh, I would assume that we're not gonna have any problems with the building for at least 10 years. AC, none of that. It's gonna be brand-new, thank God. But, um, pretty much a pretty good roadmap, a little bit deeper than I wanted to get into. And again, if you scroll down, Sheila, you can see all the, uh, just gives an explanation of how I came up with that number, three percent inflation projected now to years, seventy-seven, you know, for the cost of the loan, four percent, or four percent interest. And that's all a guess. I mean, that can all change tomorrow. I don't know what the interest rates are gonna do when we go to buy something. That's the best guess that I have today. That's how we come up. That's why I said the numbers really aren't important, especially for this meeting. This is just a map of where we're going. That's it. On the bottom, you can see we currently replaced four or five sets of the yellow PPE. That's the yellow gear that everyone uses for structural firefighting. That's a 10-year, uh, lifetime on each one of them. There's nothing I can do about it. I have to replace them. You can't be in that. If you're gonna go into a structural firefighting, uh, incident, you have to have gear that's less than 10 years old. If something would happen to them when it's over 10 years old, obviously I'm gonna be in trouble for that. And that's an OSHA requirement, NFPA, not me. We placed five sets this year, cost of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty. Nothing I can do about it. I mean, that's just the way it is. Guys have to be protected to go in. We currently replace two to three eight-hundred megahertz portables per year. And for those of you who don't know, about ten, maybe ten or 12 years ago, we spent about two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars on radios. Well, now the county is changing and you have to be this TDMA compliant, which means basically we have to replace every single radio again, or you will not be able to talk to dispatch. So we've been preparing for that. We have about thirty portables, probably fifteen mobile radios we need to replace by 2025. So again, just doing what I can afford. And then on our bottom, like I said, it's, this is all just projected. So don't take it for gospel. It's government. Things could change. I could break something tomorrow and need to replace it. This is the best guess of the roadmap as of today. All right? Anybody have any questions?
Anybody question, have a question, to read?
I have one. When the mayor asked us, each of us council members to submit to him items that we thought should be talked about strategically, I added, other council members may have done this also, but I asked that capital improvement needs of specifically the fire department be added because of the federal requirements and like replacement of fire trucks periodically and stuff. But correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like you're operating a budget that's pretty, pretty well anticipatory of most, most all of this.
Well, lucky for me and for the, uh, citizens of Southern Shores, you all have given me the opportunity to actually be chief and do my job. So I'm not gonna come to you and say, hey, I need three million dollars tomorrow. I don't have it. We're not gonna fire it. So luckily, there are gonna be some things that come up. I'm not, you know, but for the most part, I've anticipated these costs and thought about them and made a roadmap to get there without coming to you with my hat in my hand every five minutes.
And where, is this the first time you've pulled together a document like this?
No, my, my board requires this since I've been chief. This is just the first time you all are seeing it because it's required by contract.
Okay.
I have more bosses than you could imagine.
So this is updated, so this is good. This is updated every year.
Yeah. This is every year it's updated.
If anything pops up, we can have full warning of it.
Yep.
Okay. Sounds like a plan.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Well done.
Yeah, excellent update.
Excuse me? Uh, the copies I have are probably like that big because I only printed them, you know, like the secretary printed the ones I gave them. If you want to stop by the fireplace.
You can have this one.
Here.
We'll get you, we'll get you a copy. Don't worry about it. Put that right up there for, I got one, I got an extra one. I got an extra one.
Looks like you can have three of them.
Item D, a couple of you asked about a town land use plan update when you submitted your request for long-range item to me. Does anybody wanna, wanna broach this, uh, town land use plan update subject?
Yeah, I'd like to wonder if we even need to do that, um, because it's not required of the towns anymore. It's gonna cost about thirty thousand dollars to get a consultant to do that. And I'm not saying we don't do it, but I'm just wondering what the value of it is to the individual towns now. Wes, do you know if any other towns have initiated a land use plan updates and state, state requirement was eliminated for towns to do them?
Duck is either right now in the process of updating theirs and KDH as well is in the process of updating theirs. And I believe Dare County is in the process of updating theirs.
But Dare County is still required by the state.
Dare County, not a municipality, so, uh, but KDH and Duck are either just finished or still in the process of updating theirs.
Okay. Do you know why they're doing it if they're not required?
I do not.
Okay. I'm not trying to advocate against not doing it. I'm just wondering what value is it to us?
Well, it's like any other plan. Plans go out of date because things change. And my understanding of our land use plan is it provides overall guidance for other plans.
It's a, it's a tool for making decisions for zoning and other things. It's, the census data is based on the 2000 census in our current plan. It doesn't address beach nourishment, which that's something that, that could be included if we were to update it. But overall, I mean, things change in the town. Um, there are policies in there. Uh, the town can decide to make new po, you know, create new policies, amend current policies. I mean, it's, it's a guide for how the town wants to move forward or sees, uh, how to move forward. So it's not, not required, but maybe necessary occasionally. Yes, sir.
Well, in your opinion, um, would it pay for us to, as a town, without consultants or necessarily trying to adhere to the exact letter of the camera-required land use plan, would it be advantageous for us as a town with our planning board and/or committees or whatever to update a land use plan that we could adopt as town policy to use?
I would not recommend moving forward without a consultant. Um, I don't think we have the ability to do that right now with the planning board, everything that's been going on. Previous proposal, proposals, when we looked at this, like you said, were around thirty thousand. This was considered for a lot, this, this current year's budget, I believe. At one point, um, we had two, um, two folks come and present to you all. Their prices were, um, not exceeding, uh, let's see, between twenty-two and twenty-eight thousand for one, and then the other not to exceed thirty-seven thousand, five hundred for the other. Um, and then another reason to make, hire a consultant is that there are certain guidelines and statutes that have to be followed with, with your camera land use plan.
Okay.
And there are also, there's grant money available. Usually every year, DCM, uh, allows and provides for grant money that can be applied for and used specifically for updating your land use plan. Um, so that, I think that's usually every spring. But it depends on, it, that could change anytime. But historically, DCM usually has grant funding available.
What, uh, there's grant funding available for that?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. That, that kind of knocks back my, one of my arguments. Um, when does our current land use plan expire?
There's no expiration date.
There is no expiration?
No, sir.
Okay.
When is, when is the requirement, I think we asked the consultants this too, but...
There is no requirement for municipalities to update every so many years. That is not a requirement.
Do you see any benefit in updating ours right now? Because it...
Our, uh, like I said, the census data in it is based on the 2000 census. Some policies, you know, the current council, I mean, and the planning board will be involved in making those policies. It's up to you all to review them and think if they're still applicable or if they need to be updated. We've obviously, obviously been talking about beach nourishment for some time. That's something that can be studied and addressed in there as well.
How does the census, census interact with the land use plan? So, meaning we've got a census going on right now?
Right.
How, how do the two interrelate and is it worth waiting till we get a new census?
It helps with economic trends and population data, um, things of that nature.
Okay. So, but I guess to, to the, to everybody's, if we need that information, we should almost wait till we have the most recent census information so we can incorporate that in there and be accurate. I mean, that's my, my impression.
Yeah, that's my impression also.
But based on everything, uh,
I don't know.
Wes said, I, I think we should update it. I really do. It makes no sense to have a document that's out of date. And it has, uh, like I said, it's a basic plan, overall plan that, uh, provides guidance to, uh, everything we do in the town. Because I recall, one of the most important things in there is our vision statement. In other words, it tells what Southern Shores is all about and it's, everything stems from that.
I can, I can easily get on board with updating our plan. I was just trying to figure out, you know, since the state does not require municipalities to do it, is there any advantage to doing it? Because that's a cumbersome process and it, it's a mess sometimes, but...
I think he gave a good justification.
Yeah, I think he did too.
I, I agree. I agree with you, Fred. And I, I would say that I, I was involved in that, um, two thousand and five initiation of our most recent land, uh, land use plan. And it was, uh, not adopted till 2012, so it was already seven years old when we adopted it. So I think it's not a bad idea at all for us to, to look at hiring a consultant and, and bring it up to, up to date.
We can, um, include this in, um, upcoming budget discussions, if that's what you want, if that's the council's pleasure.
That's my question.
Um, and then, you know, it would be something we could initiate in the fiscal year 2021.
It seems like that might be a more appropriate time to initiate it because by that time it's pushing 10 years old and...
New census data.
Yeah. And that's a question would be worth asking is, do they need that upfront or can that follow during the course? Because it's not just gonna happen. They gotta do work.
Does what need to be up?
The census data. Do you need to have it upfront when you hire a consultant or is it something that can be incorporated over time?
Um, I'm not 100% sure. I would have to find out. Um, I would want to think and assume that the data would have to exist before you can use it and put it in a document.
Well, I'm, I'm, knowing the process takes six months.
Well put.
It's fair enough.
I mean, I didn't mean to...
No, I know, I know. Well, knowing it takes six months, my thought would be, can you get them started three months and, and then you get this data information, you can leave it into the report? Or do they need it to start?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure. I would, I would have to defer to the experts on that. Um, I, I can't, I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Well, the thing, the thing I want to make sure we, we do is, as, as, as a manager, you'd put that in the, in the, on the agenda for, for consideration during our budget session in the spring.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Any other discussion about the, uh, town land use plan, council? If not, we'll go on to the town-wide walking path system. We're doing okay on time. We may, may get through this. I, I think if memory serves, which is, is always questionable, if it does, I think we discussed maybe having the CIIP committee address this issue with additional walking paths through the town. I know, go ahead.
I, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. Um, I think Councilman McDonald brought that up about referring it to the CIIP. And the, uh, rest of council pretty much agreed to it during discussions of it, but if I'm not mistaken, it was not included in our, the final motion on that subject. So I think we just need to say, if we want it in the CIIP, we need to say that now.
What I was speaking to was the financing of it. I wasn't speaking to putting it there. It was in reference to the fact we're pulling money out of our, uh, fund balance to pay for a sidewalk that, that any, if you're gonna plan a sidewalk program, it needs to be inclusive into your budget and part of your CIP planning.
So CIIP would be the one to present those, those options to us.
Well, you'd use the money that you've set aside for capital improvement
Right.
to fund your programs, just like you do your roads and your buildings and everything else.
So you're okay with the CIIP looking at it to, to prepare that plan?
And use money that's there.
So you, so at budget time, we might decide to increase the money we allocate to, to road improvements and have that as a food, work on paths.
One, one thing that, and I had brought this up too, is one of my considerations early on. What interested me is we, we've been dealing with really hotspot issues where we're trying to get folks access to the beach and, and deal with safety. But I'm, I'm really interested in kind of a comprehensive look at where are we trying to get with this? So you've got paths in other towns
Exactly.
that we can connect to and really leverage those and, and create a longer, you know, walking, riding experience for folks. And maybe a better one. And maybe it's not even a whole lot more. Maybe it's improvement of existing ones. Maybe it's connecting, hey, if we just connected here, we could really get a, a much more efficient flow, working with our partners at Chickahawke and SSCA. Um, Chickahawke has a lot of paths, but SSCA has some too. So, so it's really kind of that comprehensive, what are we trying to connect? What is our goal? The goal, you know, with the thought being that we could present folks with a picture of here's where our paths are. And I, and I think people, I know people use them, but I think they'd use them more if there was a, a little bit of study done. And I don't care whether that's done by CIIP or, uh, I don't think it need be an outside group. I just, I think it's important to understand where we're going.
We have an outside group who came in and did that pedestrian plan. And they did, uh, I would give them a C because they had some gaps in there, but they had a lot of good stuff. And then a lot of that report was just cookie cutter stuff that they did in Asheville too. So, um, I think that we can take that and even use it as a basis and then localize it more than what they did.
And that will help get to what Gary said. Now we want to know about costs. What's it gonna cost?
Yes.
Well, if, if we can do smaller paths more economically, then that helps to the, to everything else. So, so anyways, that, that, I would also agree that you go to CIIP to look at.
Uh, following up what, what, what Jim said, there, there was quite a bit of effort put into that plan. It was not adopted and it's still on the shelf, as I recall, to be adopted if we want to. Uh, or we could, we could take it and modify it and work with as a basis for something for more, for a better plan system for ourselves.
We did pay for that, right?
Oh, yeah.
It was paid for, completed, but never adopted.
Okay. So there's no ethical standards about ripping good ideas, the good ideas that they had out of there. They, they have been paid, right?
They were paid. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right then. If they, we can find the good parts and incorporate that into our own.
Sure. Sure.
Good start.
Any further discussion about the town-wide walking path system? We on, on, everybody on board with what we're gonna do there? Uh, seasonal cut-through traffic, uh, that's on this list as something, as a long-range plan. What are your thoughts on that, Fred? Do you want, we, we're addressing that now through a committee at some point? You want to talk about it tonight some more or?
Yeah, I, um, I agree. We, uh, I think it was in July, we established a citizens committee and Tommy Carroll is, uh, leading that effort. He has, uh, I don't want to speak for him, but based on discussions I've had with him, he's added another person or two to the committee. And, um, I advised him that, you know, we need to start getting, um, more meetings and getting, um, some recommendations in place. And what I'm pushing for is, uh, hopefully by the December meeting, that he can present some of those recommendations. And I guess my ultimate goal is to get recommendations available to us with some estimated costs so we can get in the budget cycle, uh, starting in February. And, uh, he believes he can have it ready, um, by latter part of the year. Now, that's based on just informal discussions. I, I'd rather him come to a meeting and I can get him on the agenda for, uh, October to, uh, give us a status and an update.
Well, I, I, I think Sheila's provided him with, with, with the information he needs to, to, to set up his committee
Yeah.
and, and to advise the council who, who's on his committee.
Yeah.
And, and then I guess, when the committee meets, it's a public meeting, he has to advertise that.
He will do. He understands the, uh, process. And thanks to, uh, Wes and Sheila, um, he's got the rules in place, so he understands.
All right. Thank you.
And I made it clear to him too. He's doing it by book. But my point is, um, the recommendations will probably come latter part of the year and, in time for, um, start of our next year's budget cycle. Assuming the council will adopt, you know, any of his recommendations.
Right. Right. I understand. Any further discussion on that one, council? Any questions?
We are aware that that is an issue. And it's been before us as long as I've been on this council and prior to me being on this council. And, you know, we're just not doing anything to address it. We hear the complaints every year.
And, you know, we're just not doing anything to address it. Um, we hear the complaints every year. Um, there's, there's differences in what people see. I would hope that council would do something at the end of this committee and not do like, we had a committee before, made a recommendation prior to me even being here. And it just kinda fell on deaf ears and nothing ever happened with it. So I think cut through traffic's getting worse each year. And we have to do something to address it.
Well, I think we have and, uh, through Tommy Carroll's efforts, he's formed a committee and so he's gonna come back to us with some recommendations.
We had a committee prior to made recommendations, had town hall meetings.
We did do the no left turn and, and it didn't work. So it wasn't like we didn't try. I mean.
You said it didn't work, but people who live over there said it did work.
Yeah. Well, I'm just going by the numbers. And the numbers were, we, we would have been better off paying people, pay two hundred people, a hundred dollars not to drive down the street.
Well, bottom line is this is in a committee right now. Why aren't we waiting to see what they come back with for recommendations?
That's.
I mean, that's, that's its proper place right now. We, we, we have agreed to have that committee.
We did. And there was a committee before that.
Well, let's see, you know.
And nothing happened from that. I'm just saying.
Well, you have to swing twice before you hit the ball.
Well, and, and Gary's right though. You bring up a good point though, because if.
I think you can hit it on the first strike if you, if you, if you swing, keep your eye on it. But the council did not keep its eye on it.
Well, no, but Gary's right though. I mean, it doesn't mean we stop the committee. And, and clearly in the past, it hasn't worked. I think this could, the, the success of this committee, and I told Tommy this and I'll say it again, is completely dependent upon getting a cross section of people. If the committee is made up of people who just agree with what Tommy is saying or what a certain point of view is, you're gonna see the same thing happen. You're gonna see a swing and miss. So in the last meeting when he came in, it wasn't awe inspiring that he's got a good diversity of people. Um, so he needs to make that committee and Fred, you can help him get people who disagree with him on that committee. Because otherwise, and I'm not gonna be here, but otherwise, you, you got a better chance of it not being accepted. And it's not gonna be fair. So.
Or, or, or the word that will differently get people who at least have, um, maybe some different ideas about how to make it work.
No, I've, I've discussed that with him. He's, he's aware of that. And I mean, I, it's, it's serious enough that we have a group of people on the street that wants, they want to close their street. And then you've got a group of people against it now because their fear is those cars will go around and go down their street and they'll have it. So it's a serious concern for our council and, and for our community. Uh, and I've heard all the things about, well, you know, we need to tourists, we need that. But we also need our community to be able to travel back and forth and have emergency services and those kinds of things and public safety. Uh, and I think we've just let the ball drop.
I don't think anybody is disagreeing that it's a serious issue, but council has authorized the committee. And we're waiting on that committee to get together and come before us with some recommendations. I don't know what else you want us to do right now.
There's no easy solutions to this. If we could've, if we could've just thrown something at it, we would've. But there's no easy solutions and that's the reason you haven't seen progress. Because every solution, to be comprehensive is very hard and it requires hard choices and either in the money or in terms of closing streets, multiple streets, not just one street, as you're saying. Um, and so the consequences of these things are very impactful for our town. So of course it hasn't happened in the sense that it's got, this is a hard problem. This is the hardest problem I think we have as a town. Because I'm not sure that we're even necessarily part of the solution until that bridge gets built. And, you know, that's the key piece to it. But anyways.
I think it goes way beyond, uh, inconvenience. It's a safety issue. There's no doubt about it. And it seems like this council has always been a proponent of, um, taking measures to protect the safety of, of citizens. And this is no different than anything else. We should do it. It's like the fire department, police department. We gotta have them for safety. Cut through traffic and, uh, I don't live on a street with, uh, cut through traffic, but I'm very near one. And I know a lot of people that are on those streets. I've gone over and observed Saturday morning traffic. And, uh, it's not good. It's not good at all. And the quality of life for those people is, uh, in jeopardy. And people are really getting upset. And I think we've gotta, and I think through this committee, and we're depending on Tommy to come back with some credible recommendations, I think, uh, maybe we may make some headway.
Agreed on everything you just said.
Okay.
But we need to wait for Tommy to come back with some recommendations right now.
Well, I think what Gary's trying to say and I think Chris was trying to say, we just wanna be sure it's a problem that's gonna be adequately addressed. And it won't be, as Wes was talking about earlier, we got a plan that sits on the shelf. We're gonna get a plan and we need to take some action. I think that's the point we're trying to make.
If there's credible, if there's credible solutions proposed by them, I mean, they certainly, it's this ju, this council's duty to look at.
What Fred, what Fred said leads to it. When, when was the, uh, walking path plan done? I don't recall it. Twenty fourteen, thirteen, somewhere in there maybe? Plan was done twenty fourteen. Put it on the shelf. That's my point. And it should've been done and initiated and planned for and budgeted and just, you know, those kinds of things just fall to the wayside. Planning is an essential. And it's not being done.
Nobody's arguing that. That's what we're up here doing. And that's what's been going on. And you were on council for two years. You could've pushed that thing.
I pushed every time. And does planning get done? No.
But, but sometimes you do a report and you, you may change your priorities because of that report. That's not, I don't know the, the circumstances behind why that report was shelved. But I know that oftentimes you'll do a report, you'll get information and, and you still decide not to move forward. But it doesn't mean that the report wasn't valid. It just means that, okay, priorities have shifted. Maybe we don't like the result. So.
We're also, the Dogwood Trails Task Force was formed and we have initiated and completed one sidewalk project. And we're working on another one. So their, their, the report, it wasn't completely abandoned. It gave us ideas and everything and we're working on implementing parts of it. Now, I'll be the first one to criticize some parts of that. But, you know, what happened that, that council did not adopt it or anything, that, that was before my time. I can't speak to that.
Well, the Dogwood Trail Task Force did a good job, but they, what their, their remedy for the solution with, uh, stopping the, what, what y'all call the cut through traffic, what our police chief calls traffic, uh, was to close the Dick White Bridge. No big mystery. Close, close the Trinity Trail Bridge, uh, Trinity, Trinity, Trinity Juniper Bridge. And you stop, you solved the problem. But you also slap a lot of people who live here year round in the face because they wanna get across their bridge, go to the store or emergency, emergency access for some reason. So you, it's a catch twenty-two situation. You're gonna have to make some compromises and decide what you really want. Uh, in, in, in response to Mr., Mr., uh, McDonald's comment, uh, no decision is a decision. If you don't do anything, you've made a decision. You might, you've, you've decided you're not gonna do anything. So we can beat that to death. But we're gonna, we're gonna look at this again and see if we can come up with a solution to it that doesn't force, uh, five hundred cars to make a U-turn on the one fifty-eight to get back and make a right turn. We may have to come up with some other, some other approach to this thing, but we can do it. I'm sure we can. The next item on the agenda is the stormwater. We're gonna wrap this thing up here in just a few minutes, I think. We talk about stormwater. And I don't know who brought that up, but a number of us did. So who would like to, who'd like to take the first poke at this one?
Council, Councilman McDonald, didn't you, weren't you trying to get that on there? Uh, as it related to Seacrest Village?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I had, I, I think stormwater's gonna come up. So this is just mostly to start the discussion.
Not for Seacrest.
But, but the reason why I think it's gonna come up is as we adopt these new flood maps and as Derek County comes up with new minimum heights, we're gonna be dealing with, with the, the height question, the amount of fill. And, and so, um, stormwater is really important that we, that homeowners capture their stormwater on their land. Um, other towns do it differently. Um, sometimes if they require homeowners to do it, we've taken some steps to give Wes the ability to require stormwater plans when he was, when he was, um, planning. And, um, we're in situations where you might have runoff. Um, but stormwater also comes from the streets onto people's yards. Um, and that's not the people's fault. And so, you know, not all those things can be addressed initially, but, you know, I, I just think it's something to keep an eye on because it, it touches so many issues, um, and zoning issues that, um, you know, we saw, what was it, Michael, that, that we had all that water around for so long.
Michael and Matthew.
Michael and Matthew. And that was just, that was all rain. And that can happen again. And, and you're never gonna stop something that bad. But it's the middle events. It's the more, the more minor events that hopefully we can make better. Um, that's the only reason why I support it.
Well, you hit the nail on the head. Well, we can't stop something like Michael or Matthew. And I think there's, it's important to distinguish between a normal, uh, severe puddling on a road from a normal rain versus something where we get six inches to a foot, you know, in one storm event. And I understood that, um, I'd had to go back and listen to the tape, but I don't think it's worth it. Um, I understood you maybe incorrectly that you were wanting to look at those areas east of NC twelve that was, uh, ponding so badly after some of those storms. But we have pumps that can pump that water. And I, I, I don't know any other solution to that.
Well, right in front of your house.
Yes.
For example.
I wasn't gonna mention that because it would sound like I was.
When it rains, it pools.
Yes.
Okay. Just one. And that's due to development of some lots that have been built on now. And that water's running out from those lots onto the road or from the road off. Uh, Deer Path, they built a new house.
There's actually two on Duckwoods Drive. Yeah.
And then, and then, I mean, that road is underwater when it's a normal rainstorm. Uh, it's pooling.
Yes. I put rubber duckies out there one time and the Labrador was one crazy.
To give you an example, uh, Deer Path, uh, Chris said, when they build, we put new regulations in place where people need to keep their water on their property. Uh, there's a house been built back there and the two houses, let's see, they'd be west or northwest of the other house that was built. And now that, they, they had flooding issues, but now they have real flooding issues because it doesn't keep the water. And he has the slope that we put in place. What we need is probably to look at, he needs to be made, keep that water on his property. Because it's running down, it's getting in the street and affecting a lot of folks. They can't walk out their front door without walking through a puddle.
I think what you're describing right now are things that we have a, a fighting chance of trying to address.
Right.
But I think one of the first things we ought to do is catalog, where are, where are all these problems?
Chris's house and his.
Well, and the same thing that.
The thing is, as you ride around, there's, there's so many of them.
Yes.
That, yeah, it'd take a, it'd take a lot of riding in the rain. And I'm talking normal rainstorms. I'm not talking about like what we just had, uh, last week.
And that's what we need to be talking about.
But that can be done though.
And that can be done.
Yeah, that can be done. And Nagshead did, Nagshead did a little study of, of some of their stuff and their stuff. It's a plan and it's, you implement it over time. You're not gonna get it all at once. Probably when you rebuild a street, you can start to address some of those items. But.
To keep it out of folks' yards.
Yeah.
Cause we build those streets up and they roll right off into.
Oh, that's, that's right. Well.
Into my yard.
Into your yard.
No, I'm serious. I know.
Just, just one last thought on this. Probably our, um, during a severe storm event, ten, twelve inches of rain or more, the area that's most severely impacted, I think, based on driving around during these storms is, um, Seacrest Village. The avenues, there's no question that if you get almost every avenue, if you go to a certain point off of highway, highway twelve, going east toward the ocean, you get to a point on every one of those avenues from, from twelfth on down, the middle part of the street between highway twelve and the oceanfront flood, is flooded. And I'm talking about twelve, fifteen, sixteen inches of water in the street. And the unfortunate part, and I've had some calls from some of the homeowners there. And they acknowledge the fact that they're, they'd like to have something done about. They've asked for that. But they also acknowledge the fact that in most cases, their home was built slightly below the grade of the street. So where's the water gonna go? It, it's gonna go to the lowest point. And that's what's happening. And, and I've actually during, I think it was Matthew and I drove those streets. And you could, you could see a pond, a continuous pond from, from twelfth avenue all the way to Circle Drive. It was just that water just a foot deep or foot and a half deep on people's property, all the way down through there. A good, almost a mile of water. Uh, the Hillcrest ponds were overflowing. Every pond was overflowing. And, and up over the street in most cases. And that, I don't know. Pumping is the solution there. I've talked to Kitty Hawk about the system they have in place and they use stand pipes and they have pumps and they have available to them. And they also own some pumps. And when it gets to a certain level, over a certain period of time, and Wes can, can address the details of that. But if, if the water's at a certain level for a certain period of time, then you, then you start pumping. Uh, you get, you, you have to, almost have to pump if you have a situation where emergency vehicles can't access a person's home. And we did that in that, in that particular storm, pump water for about five or six days. But we couldn't start pumping on the first day. This is the way, the way the law is. But I think we have to address those areas that are, that are potentially major flooding areas. Then we have to address other individual ones as well, whether it's one person's property is being flooded by one other person's property. That's, that's something that we can do through code, code enforcement and through our, our town code enforcement officer and our, and our public works people, I believe. Any other, any other thoughts about that council?
Well, do we wanna come up with a proposed plan for addressing some of these ones on streets? I mean, there's, they're all over town.
I mean, it sounds like this is a bigger, I, I, I would recommend we get an outside engineering firm to look at this and their friends to do it. But I think this would be in the next budget cycle perhaps, so that let's, let's keep our eye on this and so that when, um, and other towns have done this. Corolla. What's that?
Sunset Beach.
Sunset, Corolla, um, and Ocean Sands has, has had a problem over the years. So the county, the county is starting to make infrastructure improvements over time. They require the new homes. Actually, they want them built up like Gary's saying. So as they're replaced, as the stocks are replaced, they're trying to get, get these folks hired to better, to be above the streets. Um, so that might be something to consider for the next, uh, budget cycle. That, that let's implement something like that to study, to figure out where the problems are.
Either Sunset or Topsail has put in rain gardens along their streets to catch the runoff so it won't go on to people's property. The other thing we might, you might wanna look at, Tom, we had that gentleman that came in here talking about the pond up there being dry above where you, your beach house is. Uh, look at those ponds. You can't pump into the ocean until a certain point. But you may be able to pump into those ponds if you get a cooperative agreement with the SSCA or whoever owns them. Um.
Maybe. That's a logical idea, but.
And we have one up there by the fire station that's got some room in it. It's never, it's always dry right now because unless we have a, a major event.
You're talking about our, our infiltration basin you built there at East Dogwood?
Yeah.
It's, it's worked, it's worked very well. We're gonna be putting more water in there off the, we, we repave East Dogwood. Going, going from highway.
I understand. I'm just saying that might be a use you need to look at or a solution for, uh, some of that runoff. But back in the neighborhoods, you're gonna have to look at cutting swells instead of putting curbing and guttering in. Uh, cause there's curbing and guttering right at Chris's coming down the hill. All it does is channel that water coming down that street, right down on his property and in his right yard. And he's got a pond out there every, every time we have a rain event.
I think, uh, Chris's idea is pretty good where we, uh, talked to an engineer about this because, um, they've been doing some pretty innovative things or creative or just what you, I, or anybody up here might not think about. Like, uh, Nagshead is actually pumping to lower the water table.
Yeah.
And, um, I think is KDH doing that also? But, but I know Nagshead is. And so the problem with some of these areas is the water table is so close to the ground that when we get a rain, it doesn't have any place to perk out. And that's where we might proactively be able to pump out water and give more percolation space in the ground there, you know, so.
I agree with you, but the other side of that, the other side of that is also you might need to look at, uh, putting some regulations in place about removing trees and those kinds of things. I have several that have just been. I have several that have just been removed because of the storm. I know we're going to get more rainwater in the, in the area now. Trees keep it, keep it up on the canopy. It doesn't get to the ground. And those kinds of-
Up to a certain point, on a soaking rain, it goes on down.
It keeps a lot of it out of there.
Yes.
But anyway, those kinds of things. There's lots of options.
Well, there's only so much we can do on that, though, because we've only got the right of ways to plant in. That's going to be getting into a-
Let's don't talk about planting trees in it right away. We have enough trees every, every time we have a storm, that we have to take care of that right away.
Do we have general public comments?
I do.
I want to, I want to ask Wes a question. How, what's the process for getting environmental permits to pump water, as they've been discussing? I mean, it doesn't happen overnight, does it?
We, it's part of our emergency management plan, so let's say a hurricane or some other large event comes with large amounts of rain. We have in our pumping plan, that's part of our emergency management plan, the process involved, so basically it entails, you anticipate the event, talk to NCD-EQ, usually it's a verbal, you know, discussion, saying this may be an issue. The event comes, say we have like in Hurricane Matthew, water standing on streets, I mean, and it doesn't go away. So the criteria and the steps are in the pumping plan, but basically there's a certain depth of the water, I believe, and then you cannot pump it until 72 hours after the rain or whatever's caused the flooding stops. So the water's standing, it has to be a certain depth, it's blocking streets, it's a safety hazard, that's when you can bring in pumps, and then we have to contact NCD-EQ, they via email, I, I believe, to expedite the process, gives us a, a permission via email, I believe, to go ahead and start the pumping. And then you have to put up, on the beach, wherever, wherever we're pumping it out, you have to put up, you have to block it off, you have to put up signs, we have to have someone manning the pumps to monitor it and make sure that everything's being followed, all the rules and requirements. So that's basically how it's done.
Do we have a pump?
We have one now, and talking to the public work director, prior to Hurricane Dorian, we were worried about, you know, some of the rain projections, they were saying at the beginning, we were worried about whether or not we should go ahead and ask for some additional pumps. Luckily, it was not that bad of a rain event. But we do have one, and we're talking about budgeting for another one that we can keep on hand.
And those pumps, what, do you know about how much they cost? It seems to me thirty-five or fifty thousand dollar item, or is it?
I do not know.
Okay. I, I seem to recall those numbers being spit out in Kitty Hawk one time.
Yeah, I, I do not know the cost.
Okay.
This gets into a whole different area, because Kitty Hawk's got a lot of expertise in this, and I've talked to them about it, and it's interesting. They have certain places they pump from, because historically those areas always, always flood. And they have pumps to do it with, and they have the apparatus to make it work. We've, we had this, during this last storm, we, we had, we were searching for pumps, and we found pumps available to us. We, we had, had flooding, we would have been able to have access to those pumps and have, have, be able to use them, if, with the proper steps being followed. With that, I'd like to go ahead and ask for a public comment. This time, first person on our list is Mark Peters. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members, Ms. Kane, Mr. Haskett. Mark Peters, number two, Seventh Avenue. I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to talk about beach nourishment specifically. Due to time constraints, I'm going to try to stay in my three minutes. I will stay in my three minutes. I'd like to put a spotlight on the north beaches specifically, and the new report that Mr. Wilson presented tonight. As, as I heard his report, I felt there was a major disconnect. It just, when he talked about adding three cubic yards per linear foot in the north beaches, it just didn't make any sense, because we've progressively seen the beach frankly getting smaller, and as a result of Dorian, we actually lost a big chunk of the wedge, a wedge off the top of the dune. So I went back and talked with him and confirmed something that was in my mind. So I want to ask you if you would please take this into consideration, excuse me, as you look at whether, or when, or what part of beach nourishment to do. If you look at that wedge, his cross section of the beach, eight hundred and forty-six is the goal, well, he confirmed that as long as there's eight forty-six anywhere in that triangle, it meets the criteria. If you go back to his Eighth Avenue slide, he pointed out that on Eighth Avenue, there was a gain, but it was all out between the zero level, which is water level, and the twenty-four foot level. It was all out there. So I asked him, well, what were the changes, you know, from three all the way in the north beaches, from the zero level, the water level, up to the top of the dune? And he said almost every one of them had a negative. So I don't understand how that isn't part of this report, because, you know, as we enjoy the beaches, as tourists come here to enjoy the beaches, as we look at town revenues as a result of beaches, it's the beach that counts. And I understand that outside, that's supposed to be the sacrificial sand that protects us from the Isabel-sized storms. I get that. That's what's going to, you know, preserve our infrastructure. But in fact, that didn't even work here in Dorian. I mean, we lost a lot of dune and actually a lot of beach. Be that as it may, the real key is that we, we really took a big hit up there at Dorian on Seventh Avenue. This was pre, and you can see that people that were enjoying the beach were actually sitting on the dune with their chairs, and you can see the tracks of the lifeguards that actually were driving on the dune because there was no beach. I'll pass that around. I'm almost done here. This was today. Granted, there was a pretty good east northeast wind, but the difference between the top of the dune and the tracks down there is about twelve feet. Right now, we've got a really steep drop-off, and there's not much beach as you can see. That's looking back at it, before Dorian, those fences were under sand, and now they're exposed, so we lost that. And here's a last one, looking back at the dune. So I ask you, please take into consideration that because you meet the eight forty-six, that doesn't mean we have beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I would, I would correct one thing that you made a statement. You said three cubic yards of foot of fill?
Yes.
That's thirty cubic yards of, per foot.
I understand.
No, that's, that's, that's going to be, it would be added to the north beaches, if we do that, if we do the project.
Mr. Haskett's talking about what he said.
Right. Oh, I understand. Okay. Thank you. I won't, I won't, I won't correct you after all. Mr. Paul Borzalino? Good evening, Paul.
Could you tell us where our work is going to be back?
That's the first one, yeah.
I'm Paul Borzalino. I live at sixteen Seventh Ave, and I'm here to also speak about beach nourishment. This picture that you saw with people having their umbrellas and their chairs on the dune, I took this picture. It was before the hurricane. And I realized, as Mark was showing you this picture tonight, that this is not even the most dramatic picture. Somehow, Mark, we, we didn't even get the best picture. I will email to you some other pictures. They show on the dune canopies set up and umbrellas set up. And I went out there, and I was shocked. So I went walking down the beach to play Seventh Avenue policeman and confront these people. Why were they putting their canopies and their umbrellas on the dune? When I got up there to confront them, I started off just being friendly and said, "Why did you set up here?" And I realized, they set up there because there was no room, there was no dry beach on that particular day to set up. So they set up on the dune. I asked them for permission to take their pictures, which is what I did. And again, this is one of the pictures, I'll email you the other ones. I spoke to the people about it. And the most important thing that I want you to hear is that they said, next year, they're not coming to Southern Shores, they're going to Nagshead, because the beach in Nagshead is much wider and flatter. And they had to set up on the dune. They didn't want to do it, it was the only place they had. They had reserved their house a year in advance, so they came here. I didn't understand until tonight, and Mark just clarified it, the fact that the sand that we regained is now out in the ocean. Mr. Connor's brought up changing the goals. One of the goals of this should be to keep the tourists coming. These tourists are not coming next year, they're going to Nagshead because our beach is disappearing. The engineers report may say that there's enough sand there to protect the dune, but the sand is in the ocean, it's not helping to keep the tourists coming. The goal should be keep tourists coming, keep revenue stable, keep and increase the dry usable beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Kate Brody? Good evening, Kate.
Hi, everybody. I'm Kate Brody. I'm at two twenty-one Wax Myrtle Trail. This is actually my first town meeting, which is really exciting, happy to be here. I wanted to comment on the beach nourishment a little bit, and I wanted to sort of make the point that I think it's great that the town of Southern Shores is considering beach nourishment. It's a really proactive approach. You know, Southern Shores has historically been one of the most stable areas of our coastline here on the Outer Banks, but it may not always be. And the report that Ken presented, you know, I think he has a really challenging job coming up with some of these objective decisions based on really limited data. And I will encourage you to read the report with an understanding that it is based on very limited data. There's a lot of seasonal variability in our coastlines, and so if you survey in the summer one time and in the winter another time, you could just be looking at that seasonal variability versus long-term trends. So it's really hard to extrapolate some of these short-term and long-term erosion rates from just two data points taken at very different times throughout the year. So it makes this a very challenging thing to sort of understand what's actually happening along our coastline. A couple of things to think about, we mentioned it before, the grain size is a lot coarser in Southern Shores, that's going to change a lot of our coastal dynamics compared to a lot of the regions adjacent. And so we need to make sure that Ken and his group is considering the grain size when they're doing a lot of that numerical modeling and analysis. Couple other points, there were some questions about latoral drift, so the longshore transport along our coastline. It's important to think about, if you have constant longshore transport, you should have minimal net changes. It's really changes in that longshore transport along the coast that cause your areas that are eroding a lot more. One of the great things about Southern Shores is we have a pretty long linear coastline, so we shouldn't have too many changes to those longshore transport rates, but sometimes it, it can occur. Most of the studies in this region suggest that our net longshore transport is from north to south, so that's based on our general wave climate for the area. So we've got in the summer waves coming out of the southeast, and the hurricanes bringing swell out of the southeast, and then in the north, we get the big nor'easters. Those sort of cancel each other out, but in general, the nor'easter waves tend to be a little bit bigger, so our transport does tend to go north to south. I'd be interested to see some of Ken's data, because I think there was some confusion there about which way the sand is actually moving along the coastline. So it's good to make sure that we're just understanding what's actually going on as we try to think about making some of these decisions moving forward. That being said, I know these are some challenging concepts, and I would love to offer any support that I can to you guys in trying to sort of understand these coastal processes along the coastline a little bit better, if that's helpful. And yeah, I guess that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Nick Cohn? Good evening, Nick.
Good evening. Nick Cohn, I live at two eight two Hillcrest Drive. So I'll follow up on, on some of Kate's comments. And as she had mentioned, a lot of the coastal dynamics here are, are the coastal morphology changes quite rapidly. So I was sort of struck by Ken's discussion tonight that focused on two different profiles, one from, I think it was twenty seventeen, and one from twenty nineteen, and pulled out a lot of trends from the data that showed that, you know, pretty small changes in terms of erosion. And typically, if you, if you're thinking about shoreline change rates or coastal changes, taking in these really short-term rates and trying to project them out into the future in terms of what we would need to do for beach nourishment, is pretty complicated. And I noticed that, that project costs were going up by millions of dollars by incorporating these three cubic yards per linear foot. So I think the numbers involved from, from pulling out these short-term trends, which may not be particularly reliable, is, is something that the, the council should probably consider. And I think it was upwards of two million dollars that the project went up by. That being said, we are somewhat data, data limited, so, you know, measuring out to twenty-four feet water depth is, is quite complicated, and so maybe there's no data sets that go that far back. But there actually are a lot of data sets in the Outer Banks that, that maybe Aptim or other groups could, could look at to, to try to supplement the available data. There's tons of shoreline change rates. He had mentioned before, the, the field research facility collects lots of morphology data on, on the beach, but there's also airborne land data, data sets of the entire Outer Banks pretty much every year that, that measure out into the water depth as well. So it may be worthwhile that the council considers that there's other data sets available besides these really short-term rates that could have pretty large implications for, for the cost for the town. Excellent.
Thank you. Anne Schirzma? Evening, Anne.
Good evening, everyone. Anne Schirzma, sixty-nine Hickory Trail. I'd just like to say a word about the land use plan. I would like to strongly encourage you to update it. I think it's vitally important. Mr. Mayor mentioned that the last effort was initiated in 2005. The data for that was actually compiled in 2008. The public, therefore, has not been polled on any issues in this town since 2008. And we have a very different town than we did in 2008. A lot of development, a lot of change. Beach nourishment is on the, on the horizon possibly. We have the seasonal cut-through traffic, that's a huge problem that wasn't in 2008, stormwater, et cetera, et cetera. Not only does the land use plan give you the vision statement, which needs to be, it needs to be bolstered, it's not strong enough right now. It doesn't have enough force to it. We also, that, the land use plan also has policies, it defines priorities that the community wants, it defines commitments, recommendations. In other words, it does the job that you all are now trying to do as a committee that plans. The land use plan can do that for you. Southern Shores used to update on a regular basis. Five years was what we used to work with. I do not understand why 2012 was when things stopped with the land use plan. But it needs to be updated, and it needs to be greatly improved. As for cut-through traffic, I'd like to say one thing there. I think what those of us who are most concerned about the issue would like to hear from the town council is a commitment to doing something about it. Not negativity, not bias, not, there's no comprehensive solution, but just a commitment to doing something. And I can tell you one thing you can do right now is, is put up a sign that says, "No through trucks" on, on South Dogwood Trail. There's no excuse for these huge trucks that go through on that narrow road and then turn onto East Dogwood. Also, speeding enforcement would be much appreciated. So a commitment from you is what we're looking for. I have not talked to Tommy Carroll at all about his committee. I'm hearing ideas from people that I do not like, such as turning our community into a golf cart community, so that I have to take a golf cart to go from the Dick White Bridge over to see my mother on North Dogwood Trail. But, so there's a lot of ideas being generated. I think what we need from you is a commitment that you're going to do something and that you empathize with the situation. As far as stormwater is concerned, I think a committee should be assigned to look at that. An engineering down, an engineer down the road, but a committee now of citizens who know what's going on. And I know where the water's pooling, and the clear cutting of trees has contributed to some of that. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anne. General council comments. I just have a couple of things I want to say before we close out, um, before I ask them about, they have comments. You should know that the revised South Dogwood walking path is now available for your review in the town hall and online, I believe, Sheila. This has been revised to, to allow it to be ADA compliant, I think, at 100% level. We had, our engineer brought in an outside consultant to help with that and did a good job on it. Reminder, remove your vegetative debris, your trees and brush that are still in your yard out to the, uh, right away as soon as you can, because we'll start to pick up on Monday. Don't know where they'll start yet, but they'll just, we probably won't know until they get here to start to work. But they will be starting next week. Don't know how long it'll take. There's no way to know that, I guess, until they get here and start to work. Anyway, that's all I have. Anyone else have any thoughts? Anyone share?
Just very quickly, uh, to the two gentlemen sitting there, that's why I was trying to ask the coastal engineer about changing the goal to improve the usable beach area. But I'm hoping that'll take root here. But anyway, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jim. Fred?
I just have a question. What's the next step as far as this plan is concerned for beach nourishment?
The next step would be for us to make a decision as to whether we want to pursue it or not. You, you saw his recommendations, I think, in the, in the book. And, um, the first recommendation he made was to make a decision of which, which, uh, proposed option you want to consider, whether you want to go with the option one or option three. And, uh, the second step would be to hire a consultant to come in and help us with how, how we're gonna finance it if we decide to do it.
Well, I think we ought to consider having a public, um, hearing on this, because I heard some comments tonight from the folks on Wax Myrtle and Hillcrest that have a different view of how to interpret the data in that plan. And it might be good to hear from other people as well. So, before we make any decisions, I think we should have a public hearing and discuss it a little more detail and get the public's input. I don't think the decision is all ours.
I think we're elected to make that decision. People put us up here. I think it's up to us to make that decision.
Yeah, but like I said, I think we should consider the public's input. We should advertise it so they have an opportunity to provide that input. I was very impressed with what I heard. I don't know the credentials of these people, but what they said made a lot of sense to me. And I think we need to hear more from the public.
I, I think Mr. Wilson would, would acknowledge the fact that they are working with limited data. There's no question about that.
Oh, sure. I, I agree. It is, uh...
And he acknowledged that. He said that. They've only got a, two years in those cases.
I'm not arguing with what he presented, but I do like the fact that there were different perspectives offered tonight. Now, I'm not saying I'm against the four or anything. My point is, I think there should be more public input or the opportunity for more public...
And, and, and what's, what's that gonna give us?
What's that gonna give us?
What's that, what's that gonna give us that we don't already have?
Well, well, I don't think we have a lot of public input, and I think we need more.
So, what I'm saying is, we're gonna get some public input, may very well be very solid scientific data, but we may also get a lot of opinions, like we had the last time we had a public forum about it. And it was fine to listen to that. Didn't change the fact that we had to make a commitment and go ahead and do a project.
Well, it could, it could make a difference in decision-making. Well, I, I'll give you a good example. And Tom, I think, I don't know if you were there or not, but I went to the boat club meeting. Jim, I think you were there a month or so ago, the, um, the director of the Duck Pier, I don't know his exact title, he gave a presentation, and he said, "One of the major problems in Kitty Hawk is a natural phenomenon, and you can pour all the sand you want in there, but you're not gonna resolve that problem." And it was an underground river.
Underground river.
River that's there in Kitty Hawk. I have a feeling that that's maybe part of our problem in, in Pelican Watch. Now, I'm not saying we shouldn't do anything to, to help the beaches in, in Pelican Watch, but it's always good to have other perspectives, and, uh, it may stimulate thought and it may stimulate additional, uh, analysis. I'm not saying Ken Wilson, you know, was wrong by any means. I thought he gave a very excellent presentation, his reports very detailed. But I don't think we can make a decision at this point until we hear from more people. Now, if, if they don't use the opportunity to come forward and just, or if they just give, you know, opinions, that, that's another thing, but I think there may be more to it than just taking this and making a decision. I just, I just like involving the public and getting their input. That's my point.
I understand that. And I'm arguing with that.
Okay.
Gary? Appreciate it. Anything else?
Um, I, I don't disagree with what Fred's saying, but, but I also know that there's an opportunity cost here. Dare County has committed to putting some money into this project, um, numbers in the $7 million range. So, if we're looking at a project that's $14 million, and we can get 14 to 16, and we can get $7 million, and, and that is a time-sensitive thing. We've already put it off a couple times. So, while I don't mind hearing from more folks, if we get to a point where we lose that $7 million, then the whole project is dead, and then we're not doing anything, because now we, as a town, get to fund the whole thing. And that pot of money's only there for a little bit. So, in looking at Ken's schedule, he is initiating permitting and design of the Beachville Project in February 2020. So, the design doesn't happen until February 2020. This is good data. This is all that we've got. I wish we had more. Ken wishes we had more. Uh, Kate brought up some very good points about this. I'm sure she wishes we had more. We, the challenge here is, with this limited data, do we want to just let an opportunity pass and not do anything? And that's where we're, that's kind of, that's the rub. It'd be great if, if this money was on the table forever, but it's not.
But what's the deadline?
We've been, we've been told that the county would like to have, have an answer much as soon as possible, because they have other people wanting this money.
Great. So, if we want them to give away the money, then we can go ahead and delay.
No, I'm not saying give it away money. I'm not saying that at all. Uh, but I think there should be public input, and I think we should come up with a timeline of how we're gonna do that. If we have to have special meetings, we can schedule them, just like you did tonight, and tell the county what we're doing. And I'm sure, uh, they'll certainly, uh, understand that, that we want public involvement in the decision.
I, I'm not disagreeing with the public involvement, but part of this meeting was to get public involvement. And that we, we have some good people. I mean, let's just not, let's just not put our blinders on it. We just had a meeting and talked at length about this, and yes, we have new information. There is time built into this, but if we don't act somewhat promptly, we're gonna miss out. And if we miss out, then the town's on the hook for a huge chunk of money, and we haven't done our job.
No, I understand.
Not, looking for reasons to delay, looking for reasons not to make a decision does not serve the town. Even if the decision's no, the decision needs to be made sooner rather than later. That's my point.
I think one of the first things that we need to do is to get that financial consultant involved. DEC, is that the company name? The father-son team out of Charlotte, uh, DEC. So, Kim, are we gonna talk about this at our next meeting in October? I'd like to add, uh, an agenda item to discuss cutting that financial planner use, because whatever decision we make is gonna be dependent in, at least in part, on how we fund this.
Exactly. I agree with you.
Well, the, the sequence that we have to, as I see it, that we have to, have to make a decision about is, is determine which option we want to pursue. We want to try, you know, buy the, buy the Rolls Royce, or we buy the, the Chevrolet Tahoe, uh, option one versus option three. And I think option, the reason I have, I'm not favoring the more expensive option is because it, it's based on a, about a 30-year sea level rise as, as, as how much advanced fill you put into the project. And I think we're, we're looking at a five-year project, or maybe a six-year project. I think we, be realistic and look at what's gonna happen in five or six or seven years. The other, the other thing I, I would say is that, that they, they want us to initiate the financial planning, which is the part we have to put in place if we're gonna, if we're gonna be able to pay for the project. And the third thing, of course, is, is what was actually item number five, I think, in our, in our, meaning of monitoring the beach profile, and we've already budgeted for that for next year, for, for April and May of next year.
Agreed.
What if, what if we just added this to our next agenda, and we can discuss then which option we would prefer for the sole purpose of trying to get some cost, you know, cost, um, for the sole purpose of hiring the financial consultant so he can determine some cost on that?
We don't have to commit to the county before, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say probably November. I'm, I'm just kind of guessing I've got that time. I didn't, I don't know for sure. Uh, I think the, the issue there is, is whether the money would be asked for by somebody else between now and then. And I think we have, we have to recognize that.
Well, we could bring that up, you know, at our next agenda, and again, in choosing an option that we want to pursue, that is not a decision to proceed or not, but it starts setting us on that road in case we do, because we're on a, let's face it, February's gonna be here like that.
Yeah, but another thing, and I agree with you, um, we need to tell the public how we do plan to finance it, just merely saying the county's gonna pay for half of it. Uh, that doesn't, that leaves us with another big bill. I'll tell you what, if we decide, say, on the $14 million project, and the county pays seven, we gotta come up with seven more. I mean, that's significant.
The real number...
And people need to have an input in there.
The real number is probably closer to $16 million, frankly.
Well, okay, then 16.
Well, but that's what that consultant does, because they look at doing either different districts. That, that's actually part of the process, is to figure out how we pay for it, and they help us with that.
And we probably can't get that consultant in here in time for him to be able to give us the answers to all of those things before we have a public meeting or a public hearing about it.
Yeah.
But we at least need to give the public an idea of how we're gonna pay for it. It's a lot of money. It really is. And I'm not saying, uh, you know, we don't do it. I don't want to miss the county's commitment either, but I don't think we can make a decision without, you know, adequate information.
Well, if we add this to the next agenda for just further discussion, then that will be one opportunity. But I don't think that's what you're getting at, but, again, let's, until we get the financial information, that's gonna make or break money talk.
Council comments, Tom. We need to move on.
I understand, Gary. Uh, one, one last thing I do want to add is we are, we have, um...
I'm gonna call a point of order. We're doing council comments. Chris waited for his turn.
Right, did his.
And he got interrupted three times. You all had shots.
I haven't had a shot yet.
Yeah, you have. You spoke second. I'm just wondering...
That's right. You're right.
It's council comments, it's not discussion. We could've done this when we were talking about beach nourishment.
I think this thing is so important to our town, it's worth deviation from the rules of order, though.
Oh, then we should've done it up on the agenda.
I think we should add it to our next council agenda.
So, is it my turn? I haven't had my shot yet.
Well, go ahead, Gary.
Okay, and I would ask that I'd like not to be interrupted.
Go ahead, Gary.
Um, number one, you need to make a good decision. It doesn't need to be based on whether we get matching money or not. You're talking 14 to 16 million dollars. In the end, that's gonna be 18 to 20, possibly, it goes. The other one did, it doubled. I really had an issue with a question that was raised a while ago about public input. And I'm wondering, I guess, do you value public input? I do. I think it's important they have their chat, say, especially when we're gonna be spending 14-plus million dollars, and I'm using the low end. It is important. Public needs to be aware. I agree with what Jim said. You need to get a consultant in here to tell you about how much money and how you can get it and how you can finance it and all of that. Put it on the next agenda. That's fine. But you also need to listen to the public and value their input, and not just look at it like they've got an opinion. They're paying for this, folks, and that's very important. So, my two cents, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Deb, second?
Second.
All in favor? Needs adjourn.